Our last commissioner. No, it's good, perfectly good. Um, the first item is the adoption of the agenda and we do have a new um, agenda at our place today. Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Uh, the next item is the approval of the March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three minutes. Hopefully you had a chance to review. Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, any other discussion? Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. No, we did that. All in favor? Okay, motion carries. I'm out of practice. Uh, the next item is the recognition of council members and I think um, there's a couple in here tonight. Council Lady Campbell, do you want to speak now or? Okay, wait with your item. And Council Lady Hauser, I hear you're back there, but I can't see you. You're good? Okay, thank you. Um, all right, that was quick. So we will move on to item E, which is the items for deferral or withdrawal. And I'm for Lisa.
The following items are for deferral or withdrawal, starting on page three of your agenda. Item number one, twenty-fifteen S P zero-zero-five-zero-two-two. Century Farms Beaman and Turner Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. Item two A, twenty-twenty-three C P. Oh, and Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item two A, twenty-twenty-three C P zero-one-two-zero-zero-one Southeast Community Plan Amendment and the associated case on page four. Two B, twenty-sixteen S P zero-two-eight-zero-zero-three Williams Mill S P Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer both items to the April twenty-seventh meeting. Item number three, twenty-twenty-two S P zero-two-one-zero-zero-one Burke Hamstead. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May eleventh meeting. Item number four, twenty-twenty-two S P zero-three-six-zero-zero-one Harpeth Reserve. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. Item number five, twenty-twenty-two S P zero-six-nine-zero-zero-one Twenty-four-hundred Elliston Place S P. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. Item number six, twenty-twenty-two Z one-oh-nine P R zero-zero-one. A rezoning on Ewing Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number seven, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-zero-two T X zero-zero-one. A text amendment related to street setbacks on Side Street, on on corner lots, apologies. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. Item number eight, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-zero-three P R zero-zero-one. A rezoning request on Buena View Court. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number nine, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-two-eight P R zero-zero-one. A request, a rezoning request on Twenty-Ninth Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number ten, eighty-eight P zero-three-eight-zero-zero-one Long Hunter Chase Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number eleven, two, twenty-eighteen S zero-five-nine-zero-zero-three Orchard Phase Three. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number twelve, twenty-eighteen S zero-five-nine-zero-zero-four Orchards Phase Two. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. Item number thirteen, twenty-twenty-two S two-fifty-three-zero-zero-one First Revision Lot One Resub Lot Seventy-Six and Seventy-Seven Madison Heights. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. Item number fourteen, twenty-twenty-three S zero-four-two-zero-zero-one Saint Luke Presbyterian Church. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. Item number fifteen, twenty-twenty-three S zero-four-one-zero-zero-one Habiba Subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number sixteen A, twenty-twenty-one C P zero-zero-six-zero-zero-one Bellevue Community Plan Amendment and the associated case sixteen B, twenty-twenty-one S P zero-six-one-zero-zero-one Bend at Bellevue Ariza S P. Staff recommendation is to defer both items to the May eleventh meeting. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from those items. Item seventeen A, twenty-twenty-three C P zero-zero-zero-zero-two Major and Collector Street Plan Amendment. Ewing Drive Extension Renewal and the associated case twenty-twenty-three S P zero-two-six-zero-zero-one Production Row S P. Staff recommendation is to defer to the, both items to the April twenty-seventh meeting. Item eighteen A, twenty-twenty-three C P zero-zero-two-zero-zero-one Parkwood Union Hill Community Plan Amendment and the associated case eighteen B, twenty-twenty-two S P zero-six-three-zero-zero-one Hickory Hills Retreat. Staff recommendation is to defer both items to the April twenty-seventh meeting. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from those items. On page nine of your agenda, item number twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three S P zero-two-two-zero-zero-one Twenty-seven Twenty-four Tucker Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. Item number twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three S P zero-three-zero-zero-one Eighteen-oh-six and Eighteen-oh-eight Division Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. Item number twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-three-zero P R zero-zero-one. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. And both of those two items were updates from the last printing of the agenda. On page eleven of your agenda, item number thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-two S two-sixty-four-zero-zero-one Fifty-seven Thirteen and Fifteen, Fifty-seven Fifteen Maldina Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. Item number thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-three S zero-one-six-zero-zero-one Eight Forty Old Lebanon Dirt Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. On page twelve of your agenda, item number forty-two, twenty-twenty-three S zero-four-five-zero-zero-one Temple Heights. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty-seventh meeting. That's it.
Sounds like April twenty-seventh is busy. Um, so the items for deferral or withdrawal, we'll go through these slowly. Items one, two A, two B, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen A, sixteen B, seventeen A, seventeen B, eighteen A and eighteen B, twenty-five, twenty-eight, twenty-six. Twenty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight and forty-two.
Sorry, it was twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-eight.
Oh, that's one I missed. Okay. Okay, so eighteen A, B, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty-two.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard our list of items for deferral or withdrawal. Wait a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, the next item is the consent agenda.
As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. I will read through the case number and name of the items that are on tentative consent. If there is anyone in opposition to those items in the audience, please raise your hand and then the item will be presented in the order in which it appears on the agenda. Starting on page eight, item number nineteen, twenty-twenty-three C P zero-zero-three-zero-zero-two Bordeaux White's Creek Keynes Trinity Community Plan Amendment. Is there anyone in opposition to item number nineteen? Yes, okay, nineteen will be presented. Item number twenty, twenty-twenty-three C P zero-zero-seven-zero-zero-one West Nashville Community Plan Amendment. Is there anyone in opposition to item number twenty? Number twenty will be on consent. Item number twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three C P zero-zero-eight-zero-zero-one North Nashville Community Plan Amendment. Is there anyone in opposition to item twenty-one? Twenty-one will be on consent. Item twenty-two, twenty-sixteen S P zero-two-nine-zero-zero-three Sixteen Thirty-Six Lebanon Pike Apartments S P Amendment. Is there anyone in opposition to item number twenty-two? Twenty-two will be on consent. Item number twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two S P zero-one-seven-zero-zero-one two-twelve Sunset. Is there anyone in opposition to item number twenty-three? Number twenty-three will be on consent. Item number twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three S P zero-zero-two-zero-zero-one Thirty-Thirteen Batavia S P. Is there anyone in opposition to item number twenty-four? Yes, uh, twenty-four will be presented. Uh, item number twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-two-seven P R zero-zero-one. A rezoning on Michigan Avenue. Is there anyone in opposition to item twenty-seven? Twenty-seven will be on consent. On page ten of your agenda, item number twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-three-three P R zero-zero-one. A rezoning request on Donaldson Pike. Is there anyone in opposition to item number twenty-nine? Yes, okay, twenty-nine will be presented. Item number thirty, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-three-four P R zero-zero-one. A rezoning request on Fourth Avenue South. Is there anyone in opposition to item number thirty? Thirty will be on consent. Item thirty-one will be presented. Item thirty-two, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-three-six P R zero-zero-one. A rezoning request on Murfreesboro Pike. Is there anyone in opposition to item number thirty-two? Thirty-two will be on consent. Item number thirty-three, two-thirty seventy-seven P zero-zero-one. A PUD cancellation on McGavick Pike. Is there anyone in opposition to item number thirty-three? Thirty-three will be on consent. Item number thirty-four, two thousand nineteen S two-fourty-one-zero-zero-three Corsi Farms. Is there anyone in opposition to item number thirty-four? Thirty-four will be on consent. Item number thirty-five, twenty-twenty S one-seventy-one-zero-zero-one Still Springs Ridge Phase One Section Four. Is there anyone in opposition to item thirty-five? Thirty-five will be on consent. Item thirty-six, twenty-twenty-two S two-fifty-four-zero-zero-one Caraway. Is there anyone in opposition to item thirty-six? Thirty-six will be on consent. On page twelve of your agenda, item number thirty-nine, twenty-twenty-three S zero-three-seven-zero-zero-one Skyridge Phase Four. Is there anyone in opposition to item thirty-nine? Thirty-nine will be on consent. Item forty, twenty-twenty-three S zero-three-eight-zero-zero-one Skyridge Phase Five. Is there anyone in opposition to item forty? Forty will be on consent. Item forty-one, twenty-twenty-three S zero-three-nine-zero-zero-one Skyridge Phase Six. Is there anyone in opposition to item number forty-one? Forty-one will be on consent. Item number forty-three, twenty-twenty-three S zero-five-three-zero-zero-one Michael Boatman Property. Is there anyone in opposition to item forty-three? Forty-three will be on consent. And item number forty-four, twenty-twenty-three S zero-five-four-zero-zero-one Tipton Property. Is there anyone in opposition to item forty-four? Forty-four will be on consent. I'm gonna read through the captions now. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within sixty days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. The following items are on the consent agenda. Page eight, number nine, oh no, sorry, twenty, twenty-twenty-three C P zero-zero-seven-zero-zero-one Net West Nashville Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the West Nashville Community Plan by changing the land use policy from neighborhood evolving to neighborhood maintenance for property located north of Charlotte Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three C P zero-zero-eight-zero-zero-one North Nashville Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the North Nashville Community Plan by changing the land use policy from neighborhood evolving to ma, neighborhood maintenance for property located north of Clifton Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number twenty-two, twenty-sixteen S P zero-two-nine-zero-zero-three Sixteen Thirty-Six Lebanon Pike Amendments S P Amendment. It's a request to amend a specific plan on property located on Lebanon Pike to permit forty-eight multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two S P zero-one-seven-zero-zero-one two-twelve Sunset. It's a request to rezone from R S ten to S P for property located on Sunset Drive to permit five multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page nine of your agenda, item number twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-two-seven P R zero-zero-one. It's a request to rezone from I R to R six A for property located on Michigan Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page ten of your agenda, item number thirty, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-three-four P R zero-zero-one. It's a request to rezone from I W D to M U L A N S for property located on Fourth Avenue Stout, South. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number thirty-two, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-three-six P R zero-zero-one. It's a request to rezone from A R two A to M U L A N S for property located on Murfreesboro Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number thirty-three, two, two-thirty seventy-seven P zero-zero-one. It's a PUD cancellation. A request to cancel planned unit development for properties located on McGavick Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page eleven of your agenda, item number thirty-four, two thousand nineteen S two-fourty-one-zero-zero-three Corsi Farms. It's a request for final plot approval to create forty-four lots for property located on East Campbell Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number thirty-five, twenty-twenty S one-seventy-one-zero-zero-one Still Springs Ridge Phase One Section Four. It's a request for final plot approval to create twenty-eight lots on property located on Hicks Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number thirty-six, twenty-twenty-two S two-fifty-four-zero-zero-one Caraway. It's a request for final plot approval to cre, to create twenty-eight lots, open space and dedicate right-of-way for property located on Haywood Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page twelve of your agenda, item number thirty-nine, twenty-twenty-three S zero-three-seven-zero-zero-one Skyridge Phase Four. It's a request for final plot approval to create forty-one lots on property located on Brick Church Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number forty, twenty-twenty-three S zero-three-eight-zero-zero-one Skyridge Phase Five. It's a request for final plot approval to create forty lots for property located on Brick Church Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number forty-one, twenty-twenty-three S zero-three-nine-zero-zero-one Skyridge Phase Six. It's a request for final plot approval to create thirty, thirty-three lots on property located on Brick Church Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number forty-three, twenty-twenty-three S zero-five-three-zero-zero-one Michael Boatman Pro, Property. It's a request for final plot approval to create one lot on property located on River Road Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including variances to section four-two-five A one C for lot size and four-two-five A one D for lot frontage. Page thirteen of your agenda, item number forty-four, twenty-twenty-three S zero-five-four-zero-zero-one Tipton Property. It's a request for final plot approval to create one lot on property located on McCrory Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including approval of a variance to section four-two-five A one C and section four-two-five A one D of the subdivision regulations. And under other business, item number forty-eight, to accept the director's report.
All right, that's quite a list. Um, I'm gonna go back through them slowly, make sure I have them all. So on the consent agenda, we have items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-three, forty-four and forty-eight.
Yes.
That's everything. Okay.
Yes. Just a point of clarification. Uh, our drafted agenda shows item twenty-two is indicated not on consent, but I wanna make sure updated draft is, uh, reflect that.
Yes, that was a typo. It was intended to be on tentative consent and we made sure that there was no one here that was in opposition. And we've not received, um, in, in writing, any comments as well.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, um, you've heard our list for the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. So Lisa, I think these are the four we're hearing. Item nineteen, twenty-four, twenty-nine and thirty-one.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So we'll give everyone a minute to get situated and then we will get started with item nineteen. You ready?
I am ready.
Okay, well, welcome, Olivia. Thank you. And I understand this is the, the first time through.
I, it is, it's my first case. I've been here for way over a year now, but this is my first case that hasn't been on consent.
All right, well, welcome and we're looking forward to it.
Um, so hello, everyone. I'm Olivia with the Community Plans Division. You don't see us as frequently. Um, and I'm gonna be presenting item nineteen, which is a request to amend the Bordeaux White's Creek Community Plan. So before we start, I just wanted to take a second to note, um, this item does not have an associated rezoning as not all plan amendments are paired with development proposals and policy amendments and changes can occur on their own. Policy changes alone allow an opportunity to shape the future while those linked to rezonings tend to be a little bit more reactive. So this is more of a proactive approach to policy. Okay. So the plan amendment site, which is outlined in red, is approximately forty-two acres and located on two parcels directly north and south of Old Hickory Boulevard. Um, the study area is less than a half mile from the I twenty-four interchange with Old Hickory. So planning staff recommends approval for changing the current T-two rural agriculture policy to T-two rural neighborhood center. Um, so just a quick look at existing conditions. Um, the proposed plan amendment area is located close to the border between the Bordeaux White's Creek Community Plan and the Parkwood Union Hill Community Plan. Currently, the site contains one single-family home, um, vacant farmland and borders trucking and coach services to the east and vacant farmland to the west, and it's close to the White's Creek Park and White's Creek High School. Okay, um, so this request is to change approximately forty-two acres of T-two rural agriculture to T-two rural neighborhood center. Um, so just for a little bit of background, this is our, our first kind of Nashville Next Amendment that was requested, um, by council. So in March of twenty-twenty-two, um, council members gamble withers Hall, Toons and Taylor sponsored council's resolution twenty-twenty-two dash one-three-two-six, which requested that planning staff review several areas across the county, including the Old Hickory Boulevard site, which is what we'll be talking about today, uh, essentially to see if land use policies should be updated to reflect changes that have occurred since National Next was adopted in twenty-fifteen. In White's Creek, council requested staff study extending T-three suburban community center, T-three C C, or T-two rural neighborhood center. Um, all west along Old Hickory Boulevard from I twenty-four towards Lipton Pike, which is all within Council District Three. So after analyzing surrounding policies and uses, staff recommended that the most appropriate policy would be an expansion of T-two rural neighborhood center. Um, so let's review the current policies applied to the area. T-two R A is currently applied to the entire, entire site along with pockets of conservation policies, conservation policy that protects sensitive features, in this case, deep slopes. Please note, the conservation policy will remain. Um, T-two R A supports active agricultural activities with limited associated residential uses and only supports, um, A G agricultural zoning, which requires a minimum lot size of five acres. One thing that's important to note here is that the zoning is currently more intense than the policy. Both properties in the policy area are R fifteen, um, which allows for a fifteen thousand square foot lot for residential development. Okay. So the proposed policy is T-two and C, and it's intended to maintain, enhance and create rural centers that fit in with rural character and provide consumer goods and services for surrounding rural areas. Rural neighborhood centers are small-scale, pedestrian-friendly, generally at the intersection of prominent roads and have access to sewer infrastructure. So as this is a community plan amendment, we had required community participation. Um, so we did two meetings. The first meeting was on November seventh, and that was via WebEx. So for the November seventh meeting, notices were mailed to about twenty property owners within thirteen hundred feet of the plan amendment area. Details of this meeting were made available via the planning webpage and shared with the district council member. We had about a twenty-five people attend. And at the time, the planning department presented a study area of eighty-four acres and attendees voiced concerns about the large study area and low meeting attendance. So because of these factors, staff recognized the further, that further analysis and public engagement was needed and worked with the council member to schedule an additional meeting. Um, and at that meeting, we presented a revised study area, which I'll show you here in a moment. The second meeting happened in person at the White's Creek High School Library. Um, and at this meeting, we presented the reduced policy area, reduced approximately half to forty-two acres. Again, from that community feedback, conversations with the council member and staff analysis. Notifications were sent to thirteen property owners as the policy study area was reduced. Um, staff also reached out to the council member and, uh, neighborhood leadership to assess in weather notification, about twenty-five people attended. So a quick note here, um, you'll see the original, um, plan policy area that we presented, which was eighty-four acres. We presented that at the November meeting. And then the revised area that we presented at the March meeting that we are now presenting today, which was forty-two acres, so about half of the original size. Um, so I'm gonna talk about what folks said at the, the most recent meeting as we presented this revised study area. So during the March second meeting, um, staff provided, provided the revised study area boundaries and attendees brought up the following concern. Non-residential uses creeping into residential and agricultural land, need for T-two N C design standards and lack of an associated rezoning proposal to see what may be built. Um, staff collected comment cards at this meeting. Five comment cards were in support, two were neutral and six were in opposition. Um, so we analyzed this policy using four primary factors and I'm gonna go into each on the following slides. Um, so the site is within the Green Network, which emphasizes rural character and preservation of sensitive environmental features. Please note that development can still occur within the Green Network and T-two N C still meets the qualifications by concentrating services while preserving larger rural area. Conservation policy again is remaining on this site. Um, so the intent of T-two rural neighborhood center policy is to maintain, enhance and create rural neighborhood centers that provide a mix of services and uses. And one reason that staff believe this area is particularly appropriate for T-two N C is its proximity to public resources, like the White's Creek High School, White's Creek Park and the interstate. that can complement a neighborhood center. Some notes on streets and connectivity. The plan amendment area is located on a key Whites Creek thoroughfare, Old Hickory Boulevard. It is about a half-mile away from an interchange with Interstate 24. Old Hickory Boulevard is classified as a two-lane scenic arterial boulevard by the MCSP. Because of the plan amendment's location, which is significantly north of major population centers in the county, the sprawling development pattern found in this area, vehicles are typically how you get around and are kind of the only viable mode of transportation to neighborhood center areas. So a quick note on the relationship to surrounding policies. So essentially, this change would be an extension of the T2 NC policy, which is currently found to the east in that dark green. And T2 NC policy to the east then borders T3 CC policy. The extension of the T2 NC policy allows for the creation of a complete center, which is also in line with the linear development pattern found along many rural arterials. We tend to find this linear pattern because the depth of development is limited due to environmental constraints, you know, which has limited the creation of a street network. One note about T2 NC that's currently applied directly east is that it has yet to be realized, and it's unclear when or if this will happen. So right now, the area around this interchange offers unique services like coach and trucking companies and warehousing that have been there for many years. It currently does not offer neighborhood services. So just something to note there. So in summary, staff supports this policy change because it supports a complete neighborhood center. It could allow for additional services, amenities, gathering spaces, and housing to complement the surrounding rural neighborhood. And in doing so, could enable shorter travel times to amenities for nearby neighborhoods in the community. And it also follows the linear development pattern found along many rural arterials. Okay, so in conclusion, staff recommends approval of this policy change from T2 rural agriculture to T2 rural neighborhood center. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. And Council Lady Gamble, I think this is yours.
Time. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for hearing me on this topic. And before I get into it, I have to thank you. It has been a whirlwind of a week, actually, a whirlwind of the last two months. And I want to thank you all. This is my first time appearing before you since the whole council reduction maps and everything. And I just want to thank the planning staff and the Planning Commission for all of your hard work, your extraordinary work in a limited amount of time to come up and to adhere to what was put, the charge put before you. Fortunately, we're on halt right now, and that's a good thing. But just wanted to thank you for all of your work and your guidance in doing that. So this project, as Olivia did a wonderful job presenting it, and I don't have very much to add. I'll only say that, as has been stated, this review came as a result of legislation that I filed to review areas of town that have had growth or change since the Nashville Next plan has been adopted. And this is one of those areas. As has been stated, there are trucking and industrial uses in this area. But what I'm hearing from residents in the community, particularly to the east of the property, is they're wanting more services, more commercial services, more amenities in the community. And this property is so, the proximity of it is so close to a major arterial and interstate interchange and housing or residential to the east as well as to the west that it lends to be a great location to have that type of service amenities available. However, we're needing to change the policy to provide for that. In our initial meetings, the property was owned by a different person, but since then, it's been acquired by a new owner, Austin and Anna Burton, who are here today. And they support this amendment. They don't have any plans to develop the property. And that is really the importance about this. This is not about current development. This is forward-thinking. This is proactive, looking towards the future of what the community would like to see in the area. This is putting more continuity in the development of the area, as has been stated. Surrounding properties are in a T2 NC neighborhood center. So this would provide more continuity in the area for future development. And for those reasons, I support it. I know there's someone here in opposition today, and it sounds like there were a couple of comment cards in opposition. But for the most part, I have heard nothing but support for this project, and I ask for your support for it today. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Is there anyone here speaking in support of this item? Okay. Anyone speaking in opposition? Please come forward. I think you've been here, so you know. Two minutes. Start with your name and address. Okay, hold on.
Great. It's gone. Hi. Yeah, hi, my name's Angela Williams. I'm on the board member of Friends of Whites Creek and also with the Whites Creek Historical Society. And I just wanted to point out a couple of things here. One is that this is basically an upzoning for the owners. And the previous owners wanted to put in something, and they wanted to upzone it. But when they bought the property, they knew what the zoning was. They knew what the policy was, and they still decided to invest. I welcome that, and we're going to have growth. But we need to have thoughtful growth. I was part of the Nashville Next process in Whites Creek. We had over 500 people participate over a six-month period. All the boundaries, all the parcels, all the transitions were very well thought out. Now we're getting piecemealed to death with the zoning of a T2 NC that's really not defined very well. And it even came up in your March work session that you needed to consider that this summer to define it better. Because when it was applied at Riley Parkway, we got density of a T3 sandwich of 400 units, you know? And so I think we have an opening here that we need to address and consider. Since there's no proposal, since nothing's going on, I think it's important that we defer this until that has been considered. And Nashville Next, I welcome the Burtons, and we welcome projects in Whites Creek that are appropriate, like Production Row. They have been so open and meeting with the community and hearing the real concerns and everything. And this is the western entrance to the National Rural Historic District. There is a cemetery of over 150 people right next to that. That's CO, that's Hillside. And on the south side is Little Creek right before the confluence with Whites Creek. That place floods like crazy. So there's some other things to consider on this, and I would just ask for your deferral and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? If not, I guess I will declare the public hearing closed. But then, Council Lady, if you want to come up and say anything further.
I'll just say that I appreciate all of the work that the Whites Creek community has done to be involved in the initial Nashville Next review. There were a lot of residents who have lived in the area for 40 or more years that weren't a part of that process. And as the communities have become more engaged in recent years, this provided an opportunity for more people to be a part of that discussion. And when I hear from all of the voices, I hear that there is a need for more services and amenities in the area. And as I said earlier, this would provide that. So while I respect and appreciate the opposition because it's change, and you know, sometimes change is hard, but this is well thought out. The T2 Neighborhood Center keeps the rural character of the property, which is important. And for those reasons, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Blackshear, I think I'm going to start with you.
Thanks, Vice Chair. For our staff, did you say that the current zoning is actually more intense than what the policy in place now allows?
Yes, it is. So it's R15, and the policy in place, T2 RA. Our T2 RA would only allow for agricultural zoning. So the current zoning is more intense than the policy in place.
So this policy, the one that's proposed, would actually better align with the current zoning?
Yeah, that could be argued. Yes, we could argue that.
Okay. Well, I don't want to argue it. I'm just trying to...
No, no. Technically, the zoning that's recommended under T2 NC is MUN, which allows for a mix of services. The current zoning, R15, would only allow for residential development. So while it is more intense than what the current policy allows for, it doesn't allow for a mix of uses, which is what this policy would be adding, if that answers your question.
Yes. So how does that, how do we get it to align? I guess, how did it get out of alignment? And then how would it get to align?
Sorry. So policy is always sort of the goal of what you envision for an area, but it is not unusual to have policy that is misaligned with zoning. There are times where we will have residential policy on top of commercial zoning. There's times where we will have much less intense residential policy on top of property that's already zoned one way. And so it's not uncommon for zoning and policy to not necessarily directly align because policy is sort of goal, if that makes sense.
What I might also suggest is that if in the future this body were to entertain a rezoning, we would entertain that rezoning against the new policy if you approved it today, or the old policy if you did not. And so it's really about how you want a future decision to be framed in that context. And so, you know, what we heard from the council member is that there, and what she's hearing is there's a desire for broader services, for example. And if you think that that's appropriate, given the context here, then you would want a policy that generally provided more services. But we would argue needed to protect rural character, which is why we kept it in that rural transect. And so we would want any future rezoning to be weighed against that. Now, it's always possible that a project can develop under existing entitlements. So it's always possible that you could have a residential development proposed here. And in that scenario, it doesn't matter, right? Because it's happening under existing entitlements. Does that sort of make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so the opportunity you're creating is for a future decision here.
Got you. I appreciate that. Well, it's helpful when we have a councilperson, obviously, who's being forward-thinking and allowing the body to kind of think about the best way for this area to grow separate from an actual development. And it's also very helpful. We have community members come out and kind of give their own vision for what they think is appropriate for the area. So I appreciate you both coming out today. Looking at the current policies, I mean, obviously, you see what is to the extreme east on the map. And then you see, obviously, the T2 Neighborhood Center to the immediate east. So it doesn't look like it would be out of place. I understand what you're saying. Just having traveled this area, I know the desire for it to remain as rural and undisturbed as possible exists for many community members. So I do understand that. It does look it will be a proper way to better align the policy with not only what is currently entitled, but what could be, in my opinion, would be appropriate growth in the area, something that would be responsive to the residents there in terms of amenities, but also responsive to the desire to keep the rural character. So I would be interested to hear what other commissioners have to say. But this looks like it would make sense to me for the commission to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Tips?
Well, I'll repeat a lot of the same points that Commissioner Blackshear brought up, only that, as Olivia brought up about the Nashville Next, and we're starting to see that a lot now that as we've been with it for a while, we're starting, there are always little things as our city has developed a lot during this time. And so the community involvement and community voices that are speaking this is actually kind of consistent with what we're seeing all across, you know, the area. And relooking at things, especially as developed. I too agree with how our policy is already in that area. This is not getting away from rural completely because of that just as a center. So I do agree to most points she made more eloquently, but following kind of the line what we're seeing a lot with Nashville Next all across, that these new, you know, looking at things, look at the new wrinkles is very consistent. And this area seems to be consistent with that also. I'd be in support.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is always hard to kind of decide because base zoning and the policy on top is such a conflict. So I would like to ask staff, because this is T2 RA, a rural agriculture, a policy with base zoning is R15. So if, kind of hypothetical, but anybody wants to have like a farming on that, this property, would it be permissible or under the, you know, policy and base zoning?
Under, so those are sort of two separate questions. Under the base zoning that exists right now, is agricultural and farming allowed? No. Under the policy, is it supported? Under the existing policy, is it supported? Yes. But it would not be, but a farm would not be permitted under the current zoning.
So under the current existing policy, if anybody want to have agricultural business, they have to come to our body to design-based zoning, in other words, SP, to allow those kind of operations. And on the other hand, a T2 Neighborhood Center policy, which is again, R15 zoning. So under the R15 zoning, the property owner could make residential with this RC policy. But I'm assuming they won't be able to introduce mixed-use product unless somebody who would like to consider some mixed-use in that property, they have to come with zone change for specific design. Would that be the...
Yes. Under the existing zoning, so regardless of the policies, under the existing zoning, somebody could come in and develop a residential subdivision so long as they met the subdivision regulations and the zoning code as it relates to lot sizes and those sorts of things. So under either policy, somebody has the right to develop with the existing zoning. If they want to do something other than that, then any proposal or application would be judged under whichever policy is in place.
So, yeah, understood. So in other words, because either way, this is a T2 rural policy and base zoning is R15. So either current policy or proposed policy, if anybody want to create some subdivision, they have to only follow subdivision regulations. Since both are rural subdivision regulation, they have to meet rural subdivision regulation. They can do so under either scenario. But in this case, the proposed policy will allow in the future not only residential, but more mixed-use or commercial-type of use as well on top of residential use. So I understand that both sides, you know, from community's point, would like to keep, you know, rural character. But nobody's saying you have to have, you know, farmland over there. I think they are wanting some reasonable, protected rural character type of, you know, development in the future. So having, you know, think about those and considering a proximity to interstate, I think having a proposed policy, T2 NC policy would make sense and have flexibility. And as well as since base zoning is R15, if anybody wants to propose other than subdivision, they have to come to our body. So there's... So there's plenty of future conversation. So for that sense, I am in support of the policy change.
Councilman Withers?
Thank you, Vice Chair Farrar, and thank you to Councilmember Gimble for initiating this. And I know that I've worked with the planning department to open it up to lots of our colleagues. And we're going to have a series of these. And so this is, we have a couple others that were on the agenda, but this is the first couple of those. So I think these are productive. A couple of questions, maybe first to add, just clarification, because I'm still trying to learn some of these policy areas that I don't have in District 6. So I'm very familiar with this. I do remember some of the prior proposals. Even during the regular redistricting that we had, there was a lot of discussion in the community around this stretch of Old Hickory out to Lipton Pike. There were some concerns about commercial encroachment that way. I think I'm personally relieved, probably, and I'm sure neighbors are too, that this is not an expansion of the T-3 Suburban Community Center. But one of the, so some of the things, in terms of establishing the boundaries, and that's kind of what I'm going to get to, commonly used boundaries to define these areas include natural features, which there are, I think there's a lot of topography to the north in particular, a lot of man-made features such as roads, transitional uses, which definitely I think would define what is to the east. But then there is, there's a statement that intensification should take place within the current boundaries of the center rather than through expansion of the policy. And I think, to me, one of the things that I understand what neighbors are concerned about, which is, where is this going to stop? And so I'm wondering if maybe you can speak to that a little bit more about how that western boundary of this was selected and what may be factors that would weigh whether a future expansion of this policy would be considered, going further to the west, I should clarify.
Sure. And so I want to say when we looked at this area from the beginning, let me go back up and show this slide. We had originally looked at potentially 84 acres instead of 42. And there was a ton of community concern. That's a lot of property. And there are some more sensitive features in that area. So that led to a reduction of size. As far as expansion of the policy, I think we heard overwhelmingly and are trying to be respectful of the community's intent to end the policy there, which is why we had reduced it in size substantially. And we also recognize kind of the further west you go. As you can see on the original, the depth of the property is pretty limited due to the steep slopes. And so it makes sense to end it at the 42 acres, given that the depth of development would be so constrained.
And then there's also the natural stream bed further to the west there by Lipton Pike.
Yes.
That's helpful. That gives me a little bit more comfort that we won't be coming back with a, likely will not be coming back with a further expansion later on. Another question that I had is that we do have discussion about the Rural Neighborhood Center that is slated within the work plan a little bit further out, but we're not quite there yet for everything. And I think in particular, with another case along White's Creek, we had a lot of discussion about what does multifamily potential look like. And I know M-U-N supports multifamily, but that's a little bit undefined. Nevertheless, within the Community Character Manual, there are some design guidance descriptions that are provided. But typically, base zoning doesn't provide that. Within the Community Character Manual that we have today, how would those, how does the, I think especially Community Plans team, how do you envision that what is currently in the Community Character Manual for design guidance is realized? So in other words, if someone, if someone were to rezone this to M-U-N, let's say, they pull a building permit, is that building permit reviewed by our staff or is it just reviewed by codes? Because there are some, there is some guidance about massing, that it should taper down. There's some, you know, there are some degrees of guidance that are in the Community Character Manual that I don't know that are prescribed in the base zoning that would be recommended for this area.
So first off, that would require a rezoning to M-U-N. So that would have to go through this body first for review. And I will agree that the T-2 and the M-U-N design standards may not be perfectly aligned with T-2-N-C. And as we mentioned at the last, or not the last work session, there have been so many of them recently. But I think in our March work session, we had mentioned looking into and making some revisions to T-2-N-C. I can't make any guarantees on that, but T-2-N-C, some sort of guidance has been asked, requested by the community. And so that's something we're trying to be respectful of. I don't have a timeline on that. I will say, under the base zoning with M-U-N, you are looking at a smaller footprint, small-scale retail, small-scale restaurant. And so I think that's in line with the antenna of T-2-N-C. But I understand the concern for more guidance.
And Councilmember, let me add too, is that when, so when someone comes to us in land development and says, "We're interested in rezoning this property", and our role is to look at it, look at whatever's being proposed and see if it aligns with the zoning, depending on if it's one piece of the property, all of it. There are instances where we will say, "I don't think you can meet the goals of the policy with just a straight zoning, recognizing sort of the, that sometimes the policy wants to craft something in a much more precise fashion than the base zoning will allow." And so at times, we will even suggest, you know, "We don't think you can get there with a straight zoning." And so that would be dependent on, you know, what's, what piece of property is, if there are constraints, if there's topography or other kind of natural features, we might just recommend an SP to make sure that we're in line with the policy.
That's helpful. And I know for this, on the north side of the road, there's some topography where there's a hillside that goes up. The other side is a little bit of a valley. So that was one of the things that I thought about there too. From the land use table side, I do agree that even the M-U-N and M-U-A, one of the first things that I thought of was like, "Oh, Lord, like, are we just going to have more gas stations and fast food restaurants and things like that?" And it looks like the M-U-N and M-U-N-A do not typically include those, some of those uses which are appropriate closer to the interstate or already there, ready to have those expanded. So. All right, well, that answers a lot of my questions and I think provides me a lot of comfort. I do look forward to seeing further discussion about the guidance update for the Neighborhood Center. I'm a big proponent of adding housing where we can. But just figuring out what the right mix of that looks like potentially could be a good opportunity. And maybe someone could open a small restaurant here or do something really cool with the barns on the properties or something like that within the policy. So I have much more comfort about this than I would have had with the T-3 Suburban Community Center expansion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Henley?
Thank you. A lot of the comments that I had, I think, have already somewhat been addressed. I just have one that's remaining, you know, and, you know, you kind of alluded to maybe the appropriateness at this location for an SP. But with the, kind of the current, kind of the current zoning, the planning, there's some conservation that runs through this. And Olivia, I don't know if you can go to that slide. But I do think, you know, when we think about the future of the site, I know those kind of, I'm going to use the term veins, but those veins of confirmation, a lot of times, are what can drive our guidance to anyone who will come in terms of development. I think, you know, with that here, I think it kind of starts to usher people into an SP. I had the original conversation, I had the original thought that the Councilmember shared, which is, you know, I'm glad that it shrank. I do think our communities deal with a lot of change and with a lot of acreage. And so to see that there was some engagement there and it was modified, I do think that's appropriate, especially without that level of clarity about what's to come. So I definitely understand that from the community. You know, understanding that the current zoning is what it is and it has to come back before this body, I do feel a lot more comfortable. And outside of that, you know, my comment that I had about kind of the relationship to the other, the other properties. But again, Councilmember talked about the restrictions in some of the uses. I think it's something that is reactive to the growth of the city. And I think it's also, again, as the Councilmember stated, planning for the future. So with that, I'm inclined to support staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifton?
I was concerned a little bit about this because the area was such a battleground with Nashville Next and a lot of community involvement and investment in that whole process and fears that the community had. And particularly, the organized groups there were particularly helpful, I think, to us, of which one of our presenters earlier has brought up, is that I have it right. So I'm a little worried about it. The discussion has helped me somewhat with all of this. I, obviously, we're not fond of what could be done right now as a matter of right, but hasn't been done. We don't know how long that will be, though. I'm more, I'm not without some misgivings about this, but I'm not, I'm not prepared to offer a great reason why we should not do it since it's not a specific project yet. So I'll be happy to see what happens. And we'll remember what we said today if we have anything else to look at in our note. So, thank you.
Okay. So I think everyone has had a chance to share their thoughts. Does anyone want to offer a motion or is there other discussion?
I can do it. I can make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Okay. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Our next item is 24. Jump the page. Item 24. I guess to make sure, is someone still in the room opposing item 24? Okay, great.
Okay, I'm Dustin Shane, staff planner. This is 3013 Batavia Street SP. This is a request to permit a multifamily development. And our recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Zoning on the site is RS-5. And the policy is T-4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance. So here's a look at the site plan they showed. Three detached multifamily units with pedestrian connections to the street and then parking in the rear. So currently, this property is vacant. Surrounding uses are all one- and two-family uses, owned RS-5 and in the T-4 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy. As I said, the plan is three detached multifamily units, about 11 and a half units an acre. Height capped at three stories. They're making MCSP improvements along Batavia with street trees. And then they're going to improve the alley behind the house, which is currently unimproved, out to the right of way or out to the public street. And then they're going to expand and widen that piece of the alley behind their lot. So our analysis is that this is consistent with T-4-N-M. The goal of that policy is to maintain urban, moderate-to-high-density neighborhoods. Infill areas in particular call out for a diverse mix of housing. But actually, this fits the pattern that's there now, right across the street. You can see similar, a similar three-unit arrangement with similar density and massing and rhythm along the street. And then also, this neighborhood is a well-served neighborhood. There's a transit line along Batavia. The street network is gridded and well-connected, and there's nearby commercial within walking distance. So our recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll open this item up for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? You will have 10 minutes, and you may hold two for rebuttal. And you start with your name and address.
Is that good? Great, thanks. My name is John Rankin. Good afternoon. I live, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I live at 1709 Woodland Street in East Nashville. We own this piece of property that's a much larger lot than normal in the area. And to the left and right of us are at least a triplex, if not a quadplex, on both sides. So what we've asked for and what we do a lot is, you know, detached, single-family homes. These are two-story homes. We approached Councilman Taylor early in the process last year. And we had discussed the subdivisions and things like that, but that didn't really meet what the intent was. And his recommendation to us was to do a design-based SP and really nail down some of the specifics and details. One of the more important things, if you go by this lot, that most of the folks in those triplexes and duplexes to the left and right are parking on the grass on our lot. And so what he asked us to do is, with their permission, provide parking pads off of our new alley. There's also somewhat of an encampment behind us going up under I-40. And so that alley, if you go back there, it's, I think, we think it needs to be improved. And we've proposed that as part of our proposal. I'm open to any questions you have. These are just three single-family detached homes with garages.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here speaking in support? Anyone speaking in opposition? You will have two minutes, and you can start with your name and address. That would be great.
Okay. My name is Tanya Wade hyphen Moody, and I live at 726 26th Avenue North. So I've been here before, and I submitted in 2018 a community complaint as far as the tall skinners, these Airbnb's, these condos, these apartments that they build, and especially up there on Clifton. Now they have came down 26. So we're dealing with all of this crowdedness. And then they want to keep squeezing these tall skinners in and these condos that they want to keep putting in our neighborhood. I kid you not, I've been there almost 30 years. Our street has turned into almost a one-way street because there's no parking. They want people to park on the street. And the building, the condos that they have put up there on 26th and Clifton, where is all them people going to park? There's not enough parking spaces for them to park up there. But they want to keep on putting all of this stuff in our neighborhood, crowding our neighborhood, making it look disarray. You got these tall buildings, these tall skinning, you got the regular homes, one-level homes, then you want to come in with these two- and three-level homes or condos. It doesn't even look nice. I live over there. Every day I see this. And I'm not the only one. My neighborhood. We don't want all of this stuff in our neighborhood. We don't want it. And let me say this too. The, like I said, the height, if you look at it, you got the regular homes here, and then you got this, and then you got the building here. Throughout the neighborhood, it's spread it out. It doesn't even look nice. I hate it. And I'm not the only one that hate it. Keep in our neighborhood, we hate it. But I mean, it's like our voices doesn't matter. We've been here before. Nothing happened. They let them build what they want to build. So what's the point of us coming here expressing ourselves? I don't know.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it. I will, the applicant, you have two minutes if you would like to share any thoughts and response.
Very simple response, I'm very sensitive to what she said. And we're not only adding parking for ourselves that exceeds what would normally be, but we're adding parking for folks that now are parking on the street or on the grass. So that was Councilman Taylor's. And we've worked with him very closely on this. I agree that the parking always needs to be taken care of, and that's what we've done here. And so this is one that will actually alleviate the problem. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I will declare the public hearing closed. And Commissioner Henley, this seems like one of yours.
Yeah, I felt that coming, but appropriately so. I mean, these are projects that, you know, I'm very familiar with. Councilman Taylor and I have actually had conversations that seem to be very similar to what he, the one that he's had with the applicant. that seem to be very similar to what he, the one that he's had with the applicant. You know, I think as we do see more development of this scale working its way into our communities, I definitely understand that there are challenges with it just because it's very condensed. But the one issue that has, I mean, really permeated is as we have development, a lot of our, a lot of our parking infrastructure in these neighborhoods and communities just lacks. You know, the proposed plan shows adding parking in the rear. You know, it seems as though this site's one that has been used as impromptu parking. And so not only is it, you know, solving the parking issue or at least accounting for the parking that it will bring, it is looking to solve it for its neighbors. I did have two quick questions. On the, with the unimproved alley, it'll be improved. And I see the right-of-way dedication that's outlined with the subject property. Does that right-of-way dedication, that's not triggered for the other properties? It is just part of the SP to deliver the pad?
That's right. We wouldn't, we can only require the dedication for the property that is part of the SP, but not the adjacent properties where they have essentially made an agreement to work to provide a benefit to those neighbors sort of voluntarily, but we couldn't require those neighbors to also dedicate right-of-way. Their properties are not part of this SP.
Understood. And then the second question, and this is again, I totally understand because while I do like the density, I like the development, sometimes there is a scale and a quality component that comes into play, which is again, why I like utilizing SPs. I see that there's a three-story height limit, but is there a height plane that we've set or aligning with? And I'll finish the question by, are there characteristics for the three-story that's across the street such as just the width of the lot and how comparable is this? I guess that's kind of two questions. Sorry.
Sure. So across the street where you had three units, can you back up a couple of slides maybe to the aerial? I think you can, there, that's good. So those, so the three units that are similar in their layout to what's being proposed here, those were built on existing 25-foot lots? I mean, so that wasn't a rezoning or an SP, those were sort of existing built. Now, those were built under just the existing zoning and I believe are two stories with pitched roofs. One of the things that we have been working on with SPs is trying to normalize how we talk about height because what we were finding at times is that we would say three stories and 35. A three-story and 35 flat roof feels much different than a three-story and 35 roof with a pitch. And so we have started becoming more precise in our language where we're saying where it's measured to and it's either to the eve of a flat roof or to the midpoint of a pitched roof so that we're not necessarily encouraging one type over the other that we're measuring them differently. Does that make sense?
No, absolutely.
So the existing zoning on the property, for this property and all around, permits three stories in 45 feet. And so we would have to look on the plan, but I think that this might be a little bit less than what's permitted under the base zoning. So the existing properties that are around here permit three stories and 45. I'll try to look and see if there's a, not just three stories, but what the measurement is in this SP.
And you mentioned the 25, but it seems like the subject property is about 74, 75 feet wide. Is that about, I'm trying to read from the staff plan.
It's 74 feet in width. And so it's very similarly situated to what is across the street in regards to the width of the units and the layout of the units.
Again, you know, as Vice Chair, Acting Chair pointed out, I mean, these are the types of projects I have an affinity for. I think it is the type of density that we need. I know the SP process is a little more burdensome for our planning staff, but I think it allows us to guide development in areas that are very, very sensitive, especially neighborhoods that are neighborhood maintenance. And it sounds like conversations with the Councilman, although he's not here, have been reflected in this SP. And that makes me feel comfortable, a lot more comfortable there. And then, of course, the conversation we just had about kind of the influence on design and height. I'm inclined to support staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifton?
I can certainly see from what we've heard that this is somewhat startling to the existing owners and the neighborhood. And it would be where I live, too. It does seem that it is consistent with a lot of our goals. It may be that some of the issues with, with the concerns expressed by the resident have to do with specific aesthetics of what was built. It may be that this will be different. We don't really specify that too much on most of these things. So I'm not, not at all, I'm sympathetic with established residential areas, all of a sudden looking like nothing we expected to happen. But it looks to me like this has been done with some care as well. And the comments in response to the questions the staff had raised earlier and that Commissioners have had have convinced me that it's probably something we should support.
Councilman Withers?
Thank you, Chair. Way back years ago and 2013, a decade ago, in 2013 and 2014, we had a lot of community conversations about defining tall skinny and planning apartment. Worked with us to come up with a height-width ratio to deal with that for true duplexes, but some of the things that that, so we came up with a one and a half height by, you know, multiplier by the width, this, how we would, how codes would interpret that so that they weren't just making judgment calls. But I think it's helpful to know, and I think in particular for the one across the street, that those were existing lot lines and would not have been subject to that even under the duplex bill that we passed in 2014. This one, I think, is does provide a lot of benefits generally. One of the things I did want to ask about, though, is for the alley, I know it's presently unimproved and it may have been, I may not have read it correctly, but with the improvement of the alley, what is the width of the alley for the remainder of the frontage connecting to the street? Do we happen to know?
It's going to be, there's only 10-foot of right-of-way back there and they're going to pave that whole portion there. And then on their property, they'll dedicate an extra five foot to do their part on that, but.
So it'll still be a very narrow alley. So, okay, but at least it will be paved and there will be some degree of access and hopefully folks do not charge down the alley too quickly. Okay, that's helpful. I do notice that there's bike parking that's provided in the rear of this, which I think is kind of tech code, but it's an interesting thing to actually see on an SP in this circumstance. But yeah, I think that the applicant is, it's unusual to see that an applicant, it is common to see that someone would improve an alley, but at least as it exists. But I think adding the parking pads for the neighbors is a good touch to help solve some of those problems that the community is having. So I'm inclined to support in this case. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too am sympathetic about the public sentiment because it is sort of unsettling, you know, the familiar neighborhood ranch house or one-street house all of a sudden torn down and then replaced with unfamiliar design. So it feels like a neighborhood is dramatically changing. I totally understand that. But looking at nearby neighborhood, and this is a T4 neighborhood maintenance area, and particularly looking at triplex directly across the street, I do not, you know, compel myself to disapprove it. I think it's in line with existing neighborhood character. And with this base zoning, it will allow a two-unit. So this one is asking one extra unit with exchange of improved, you know, alley, not only this property but adjacent property and also dedicating. So I think future benefit and, you know, providing parking within that property kind of outweighs with, you know, benefit and negativity. So for that, and also as far as height, I think three-story, because base zoning will allow three-story 45 feet maximum. So within, you know, kind of compatible with existing design, I think it's reasonable. We don't, you know, we could not burden the property owner for further reducing the height since, you know, already existing zoning allowed up to 45 feet. For that, you know, reason, I think this proposal is, meets the policy guidelines. So I'm a support staff recommendation.
Commissioner Tibbs?
So you answered one question. So by base zoning, the zoning that's currently, it can build two units, probably somewhat similar, well, potentially the other diagonal across that's relatively new development. Is there, are there any things in the SP about not Airbnb, you know, in, you know, part, is that part of it?
Short-term rentals, owner and not owner occupied are prohibited.
They are approved over there?
Yes.
Okay.
Both, both kinds are prohibited.
Well, actually, I'm actually going to differ with my Commissioners on it. But the only reason, the one thing about the community part of it I'm somewhat concerned about and is not just because, well, she brought it up, so it did make me think about it, so I can't totally say that. But, you know, we do have such a, you know, our communities get so wiped out, you know, and it ends up being one lot at a time. And SP, as Commissioner Henley brought up earlier, it is a tough tool, but it works well sometimes. But then sometimes I think we do, it kind of starts taking over a neighborhood. And, you know, with the current base, you know, zoning, this can be developed and it's still, you know, increase the density, but yet still have more of the character of the neighborhood. So, you know, just so it doesn't get, you know, these little one-off, one-offs. And I do know the other diagonal has already started, but this diagonal, which is closer to the street, may be still more appropriate to keep it this, in this manner. So I don't feel like it's against policy to keep it this way, you know what I mean? So it's not like, I think this is still within policy to not approve it and just to go with what they're already able to build. And I think that would, you know, just be more in line with the community. But I know it's just one voice, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. I guess I had just one question. So I feel like we see this more in neighborhood evolving areas versus neighborhood maintenance. Like how, I guess also for the residents, like what is the expectation, what kind of change we would expect to see in a neighborhood maintenance area?
Sure. So neighborhood maintenance certainly doesn't mean that something is sort of cast in stone, never to change. And what we do when we're evaluating rezoning requests in neighborhood maintenance is that we definitely take context clues to what's going on, particularly nearby, but in the larger neighborhood. And so in a neighborhood where on this street you actually have something very similar that has already taken place across the street, then we are sort of maintaining the land use and development pattern that is already occurring on the street and to some extent in the broader neighborhood as well. And so evolving, we would sort of, evolving, you might expect maybe even a different form. But in maintenance, in this case, you've got this same form almost precisely on the same block. And so you're really sort of maintaining the land use character that's already happening on the street. Does that, does that clarify?
Yeah. So if that, three units across the street hadn't come in, we wouldn't necessarily say that this was consistent with neighborhood maintenance.
I mean, if you even look at sort of the larger area, if you sort of round the corner and go down the block, there's very similar units that have happened to the south. In the broader area, there is more of this pattern that has happened in this neighborhood. There are underlying 25-foot lots in this area, much like you have in some areas of the nation. And so some of those have been redeveloping. And so this is not an uncommon land use pattern along this street, but also in this broader area.
Okay. I mean, I think I share some of the concerns that Commissioner Tibbs was raising. And having driven through here, I was definitely struck by the rapid transformation that's kind of underway, underway in the area. And I also wanted to address the residents' concern that we do take very seriously the comments that you, that you share with us. You know, even, even if things like this go forward with our approval, I want you to be sure that your voice, I mean, I think we've all registered your concerns and we're very sensitive to the concerns of existing neighborhood, neighbors, you know, when we are seeing this kind of rapid transformation, especially in our, in our most urban neighborhoods. And that's just a struggle that we continue to have to navigate. And I encourage you to stay in touch with your council member and, you know, continue, continue with your neighbors making your voice heard. So I just wanted you to rest assured that we are listening. So I guess at this point, it is open to further discussion or someone to make a motion?
Further discussion. I should always be allowed to listen to everybody first, but I, there have been some personal points made on both sides, but I believe Commissioner Tibbs articulated some of what I was feeling, but did not really have good words for describing. It's not a terrible thing here that they're suggesting, but I have reservations as well about the dramatic changes to this neighborhood that are not necessarily required. And I'm probably, I'm leaning against it at this moment. So just wanted to mention that so it wouldn't be a complete shock.
So I have a question. The, you have, you have the map up here. I guess it's the best view. So this is, this is parcel 300. Parcel 302 in the neighborhood is, I believe, is a triplex. And I don't know the dimensions and sizes of those, but does that, does that property share a different zoning designation than, than the current one?
No, it's zoned RS5. It's just a non-conforming triplex. So that is three units on 10,000 square feet, so smaller than this lot.
I just, again, I understand it and I hear from neighbors and I get to encourage them, just as you do to come here. I just, I'm very adamant when we go from however many units down. That's just not Nashville's need right now. We don't need to go down. And, you know, we have an opportunity for one more unit and what we're talking about is a 33-plus percent reduction for a project. Small developers are different than big developers. And these are, these are attempts for them to help us solve issues we have. And I don't think we always look at it that way. I don't think our, our community members always look at it this way. And I do understand it. I mean, ugly's ugly, right? I don't know if that's a word we're supposed to use up here, but ugly's ugly, all right? We don't want to encourage people to put anything up, even if it's a singular home, that does not meet a certain character and aesthetic. You know, our guidance can only go so far there. But when we talk about the density of a, of a specific site, when, like most people do, is you walk through a community and say, oh, there's something like this here, it should seem to be appropriate. Sons having them take the route or trying to subdivide this, I mean, we've, we've got the tool in front of us that gives us the most influence on this type of development. And we're possibly saying now, that's not the best tool. Somebody's went through that process, they've acknowledged what the council members have given them as guidance and they've walked through the process and our staff has recommended it. So for, I mean, I'm inclined to support it. I understand some of the concerns, but I just think we should, again, zoom out and look at it that way.
And I'm sorry, I misspoke. I did want to say that the property that's immediately next door to this is a triplex. The next one over, the 302, the one that you pointed out, is actually a quadplex. The next one over, the 302, the one that you pointed out, is actually a quadplex. And so I did want to make sure that I was clarifying there.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Sorry about that. But Commissioner Henley just brought up something that is kind of more of a bigger step, bigger thing for me. I don't disagree that we always have to look for these opportunities for more density, but that doesn't mean every place is, just because you can do it is the best place for it. I think that we, you know, and everybody knows I do get into the communities, I do feel like sometimes our character and what that character is about is still important as well. And that some places, you want to take advantage of it, but is, you don't, you don't want to go too much and start losing what that community is. As, you know, I won't name the communities now, but some of them are totally nothing like they used to be and you totally lost a lot of that character. So that's why I just feel like you can still get more here without, you know, completely, you know, changing what this character of the street could be. So, and I, I kind of think we all should look at that wherever we go about Nashville. There's gonna be some areas that, you know, yes, we can put more density, it's gonna make more sense and it's gonna work good, but there are gonna be some that maybe we, we don't go the whole way. And in my opinion, this is one of them, but, you know, I'm just one opinion for it. But I, but I do feel like we should always look at those lenses about how we are, you know, changing our character, changing community and realizing just where, what we end up with after the fact. But it's more of a general comment too.
These are all good points, I guess.
Yeah. So since we are in a discussion, I totally agree, understand Commissioner Tibbs' point. But in my point of view with, you know, larger area from, if you expand one-story street or two-street, this is a very unique neighborhood because it does have underlying 25 feet, 25 feet, you know, frontage. So they do have many smaller lot and smaller parcels. So this application is pretty in line with existing 25-foot, you know, already established development. So that's why I feel comfortable with recommending it with added benefit of improved alley plus non, you know, short-term rental owner occupy and non-owner occupied is prohibited. That's added condition. That's literally adding the housing. So without that, I would be reluctant to recommend it, but added improvement and added literally introducing housing and larger context already existing smaller frontage property about two, three-story street over. So that's other, you know, my agreement with staff recommendation.
Any brave soul here want to make a motion? Councilman Withers?
I will move approval of the staff recommendation with all conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Okay. Thank you. Proper motion. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So motion carries four to two. So thank you. That was, that was an interesting conversation and a good conversation about the challenges we're facing and small, small pieces of land throughout the city. It's not all the Titan Stadium.
Chairperson, as I may, if you wish to entertain it, I do think that Lisa might have an update on the next presentation.
We will always entertain that.
Oh, yes, sorry. Number 29. I believe that the person that was here in opposition has left, so you may want to ask.
That one was pulled off of consent.
Okay. Is there anyone here still speaking in opposition to item 29? If not, then I will ask the commissioners if you would like to go ahead and put that one back on the consent agenda?
This one.
Okay. Any discussion?
Okay.
All right. We will move item 29 back to the consent agenda. Okay. Final item is item 31.
I have an update on this one as well.
Oh.
The applicant is here and has indicated that he has been in contact with the council member and the council member has asked for the item to be deferred one meeting and he has agreed to that. I think if we can just get confirmation in some manner.
Come forward to the microphone. Thank you.
Wait, which, I'm sorry, which, tell me which case number.
Thirty-one.
Number 31.
Yes, okay.
So she, Councilmember Jums has been texting me and she said to mention that we had a community meeting and that they were in support and that she's in support and she would like to speak with the planning staff more about this, so defer to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that.
To 4/27.
So that fun night ahead.
Be a long meeting.
Do I have a, I know we always honor the applicant's request, so do we have a motion to defer? Second. Any other discussion?
Lisa, one meeting?
One meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. We'll see you on 27th.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that was easier than we expected. So I guess that that takes us to the end of our, of our items and we are on to other business. So we will start with the historic commission updates on this.
Thank you. No report for today.
None for, okay. Our parks representative is absent, so we will not have that. I don't think we have anything on the executive committee other than I'm really glad that Greg is not here tonight because that means I hope he got a little break after this rushed effort to do the redistricting and just to say thank you again for all that you guys have done. I know that that was a lot and on top of a very busy time period that's already underway. So thank you for, for doing it. And I know that when it comes back around, we're well positioned to thoughtfully guide the process forward if we have to. Anything else from the director that you want to address?
So just two comments. We are really at the end of the term for Commissioners Jeff Haynes and Emily and Blackshear, but they both agreed to stay on through the redistricting meeting because that was just too special to ask a new person to have to undertake or individuals. And so we are working with the mayor's office to secure their replacements. But I did just want to say how grateful that I am for Jeff's, Commissioner Haynes's and Commissioner Blackshear's outstanding sort of leadership and volunteerism and longstanding folks and great and deep knowledge and love of our city. And so thank you so much for everything that you do and have done. So much is yours. Now, I can't promise that we won't call Commissioner Blackshear and Commissioner Haynes in the event that we are next time around. So you might see them again and this will be awkward, but I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that we will have, we will be moving on. And I've been, like I said, I've been working with the mayor's office. And then the other thing, and the chair mentioned the redistricting, we thank you so much for your service last week. Just wanted to ask our attorney, you probably read in the news that the court did issue an injunction and just let us know sort of where we are and what additional, the word I was thinking was not appropriate. It was fun, but that was said sarcastically. But additional things that are ahead from that perspective, if what you're willing to share.
Right. So as, as the director stated, there's been a temporary injunction to item 1B of the state law, which means the law is currently being held in abeyance. So as of now, the council will proceed as they had normally intended to proceed with their elections. The state currently has not appealed and when we talk about appeal timeline, every day that we get closer to that May deadline that was initially set, our timeline to comply with this, should their appeal go forward, is just completely diminished. So time is on our side. We're good with that. If and when this, you know, basically we just stay the course as to what we were always doing at this point.
Anything else?
I didn't think you were gonna publicly acknowledge Commissioner Blackshear's last meeting. Now it seems so real. So second, what Lucy said, it will be, it will be sad not to have you and Commissioner Haynes with us on these.
We can do a temporary injunction on.
Yeah, I know. I think we might have.
Commissioner Blackshear.
Yes.
I do have a couple of comments there. And I know Jeff would like to be here to hear this too, but he's real precedent for coming back and I just thought I should mention that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll keep calling on you too.
Well, I love you all. It's been a pleasure to serve with you all. If I have to return for a meeting or two, I don't mind doing it because you are great commissioners or, no, Commissioner Johnson was pushing it. But it's been an honor to serve. The planning staff is unmatched. We really appreciate your thorough analysis and your intellect and your dedication to the city. So it's been my pleasure to work with you all. So I will see you again, perhaps behind the bench or behind the podium, but if not, then I'll see you around.
All right. Last but not least, legislative update. Anything you want to tell us from the exciting world of the council?
I had an opportunity to not file two pieces of legislation, which is wonderful. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work this week. I know it's been a busy week. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All right. I don't think anyone will dispute. Thank you. We do.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.